Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Rose City Politics. This is our big show of the year, City Council Report Cards. I think it's our last show of the year. We haven't discussed it. Are we doing another? Yeah, it's our last show of the year. That just came through in my ear there. So, hope you're ready for this. We've got a big panel tonight. We've got Pat Papadias here. Pat, how are you?
I'm doing very well. I'm free next week. I just want to point that out.
We'll record an after show next week, maybe.
Okay, all right. And, and, um, just wrapped up, um, day job. And so, um, been marking, marking, marking. Uh, so I just want, I want everybody to know that I'm the pro, like literally the pro on this panel. I may, you may not agree with my grading, but never.
Well, thank you for bringing the professional expertise to this column that Don certainly does not bring. Don, how are you tonight?
I've been drunk since April.
Dealing with the pandemic, well, I, I remarked when you first logged into the Zoom there. You're chilling back in a chair. You have a cigar lit and a drink poured, and I was severely underperforming with none of those things. So.
Step it up, Litkey, come on.
I rectified it. I've got a.
Don, I like your Provo, and I also want to learn about which one is left and which one is swipe right. I'm, I'm, I'm out of, you know, I just want to know which one is which, so I don't confuse them.
Swipe right is good. Swipe left is beat it.
Okay, good to know.
See, this is what's interesting. I didn't realize that these dating apps were inherently like politically, like with ideology infused into it. The swipe right as being a good thing, I guess? I don't know.
It's conservative. It's conservative Twitter, Tinder. It's very different.
I don't want to log into that. We have Doug.
Trumpdate.com.
We've got Doug Sartori here as well. Doug, how are you?
Doing great. I, I too am on holidays and I'm pretty excited about it.
Well, it's been a really crazy year, a bit of a respite right now during the holiday season is very appreciated. We got Don who is, uh, obviously festive with a Christmas hat on, a Santa hat. Doug, where are you coming from and what are you wearing? What are you wearing tonight, Doug?
So, so my background, uh, since we're, we're grading, uh, my background is from the most realistic and best movie about school ever, Rock and Roll High School. What you're looking at is the, uh, final scene when the school burns down and that's the celebration. And my shirt tonight, so you asked at the 11th hour for us to wear holiday sweaters. This is as close as I can get.
Very nice.
I did not get the memo on the holiday sweater.
It would be like the last message that's in the chat right now. You were, you were just busy like logging into this thing. So that's fine.
That's your holiday sweater, right?
It is. It's my, it's my always sweater.
Well, you're celebrating the holidays right now on Maiden Lane. What a gorgeous background.
Thank you, yes.
What a really great, um, enhancement to our downtown core. Um, and you know, I, I thought that the lights were actually just on Maiden Lane, but a couple nights ago I did a drive and I was really surprised to see that it stretches like all of Olet and it really gets down to, you know, uh, like almost where like Bentley's was to, I think, like gets really far down and it's just no. So kudos, kudos. I'm coming to you guys live from Pearson Airport's parking garage, which they, they converted it into a winter Christmas-like display. So I thought that was, uh, fitting, especially with my background of loving parking.
Take note, City Council.
And then I, I'm wearing a classic.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays shirt.
Cannabis on there.
Everybody's on brand tonight.
Only day of the year I can pull that off. Sorry, Mom and Dad. Um, well, no, sorry, Mom. Dad really doesn't care too much. Uh, so anyways, I'm so excited to be here for, uh, this night's show. I have listened to your council report card shows before I came on to the show as a co-panelist. So I'm psyched to be able to force listeners to listen to my bad takes when it comes to our elected officials. So become a Patreon subscriber. Give us a Christmas miracle. That'd be great. Thank you to Leuna625, building better communities for their kind support. We're going to get right into this. We have all graded the city councillors. Some of us used a rubric. Some of us used a Tinder swipe left, swipe right method. Pat is using Ministry of Education certified manuals to make sure that it's all appropriate. Um, we are going to go ward by ward. We're going to give our grades. We're going to give our rationales. We're going to have Doug do a running total and we will come out with an accumulated, um, report on what every councillor got by our grades put together. And that's basically the show. So, you know, we might as well start off with Ward One Councillor Fred Francis. Pat, you haven't been here for a bit. You've been really busy. You've been insanely busy these past months. You should get to start.
Wow. Okay. So we're going to go in order, are we? Um, and of course, um, you're starting off with one where I have given honestly, a low, what would be appear to be a low grade. I gave Fred Francis a D plus and, um, quite a few reasons for that. I'll tell you why I gave him the plus. He would have otherwise been a solid D. I gave, I gave him the plus, uh, for actually his position that he took, um, on the, on the Celestial Beacon issue this year. But, um, I'm taking a look at, uh, overall the, uh, performance. He's a second term councillor. And I think that in addition to sort of going back to the, the time that they were, he was re-elected and they were all elected to this particular, uh, council term and this year in particular. And so what they've done in that first year really, and also what they've done, um, in, in this pretty, as we now call unprecedented year during our COVID, the lockdowns and this, uh, public health crisis. So, uh, I did for, you know, we, maybe one of these days with that, all those millions that we make on Patreon, we can, uh, hire some researchers every once in a while and pull some of this. But in the time that I had, I actually Googled Fred Francis, uh, to find out what news stories, um, uh, he was part of. And it's weak. I mean, I'm just going to be honest. For a young councillor, uh, he should be in his prime. He's in his second term. You know, a lot is said, a lot of rumors about what his ambitions are. I don't know if those are his personal ambitions or whether those are the ambitions of others around him. Um, I think that he always came in on the shadow of his brother. Um, and he seems to have sort of one thing, and that is, he came in on the hold the line on taxes. And here's an example of the stuff that he spoke on in the news on issues, uh, before council, November 23rd, the contracting out of caretakers, cost savings, all over the cost savings. Uh, and, you know, November 24th mandatory disconnect on the downspouts. Uh, a lot of issues. He's very focused on his ward, which of course he should be, as all councillors should be. Uh, but very hard pressed to really find anything that contributes towards the city, um, that isn't really about shutting it down, uh, and cutting the costs of it. Urka, he wanted answers. He wanted answers about the, uh, fraud, uh, fraud situation that happened at Urka. Um, you know, I, I, I saw that as a little bit of, um, performative, if you will. Um, you know, he was, he was part of the cancellation of Roseland's, uh, curling. So that was a big one for him. He has been on top of the basement flooding issue. It is something that affects his ward. On May 5th, he, going back a little further, he, uh, spoke about, uh, the costs of the pandemic and that it was going to have a major impact on finances. Surprise. And that that would impact the 2021 budget. And, and adjustments would have to be made. He opposed the road diet on April 28th for Riverside Drive, explaining that he was surprised about the ask, thought that there was a better approach that they would, should ask administration first of all, um, i- if they should report back first of all, on whether they should or could, uh, limit the, the lanes on Riverside Drive, but he never, you know, moved towards that motion. He simply voted against it. Um, so I took a look at all of that and there's nothing that stands out with Fred Francis. Somebody who is young, I mean, I, we can talk about how many committees. I think we did a little bit of research on how many committees people sit on advisory boards. And, uh, I think he sits at the bottom part. Uh, Doug, you may have a little bit more information on that. He does not sit on a lot of them. I did note he sits on the seniors committee. I've always, uh, suggested that, you know, Fred is actually not a young person. But, but, uh, and the big D came in addition to all of that. And a big one for me, the litmus test for me was that meeting, uh, in front of council about the location of the hospital and advocating for the province to move forward on that. And I heard him speak and, uh, given that he is the hold the line and the cost saving councillors, what he had to say had nothing to do, um, with his, um, principle of cost savings. And even if I give him credit for how he voted on, uh, moving forward, uh, for that location on 42, the fact that he voted against the second motion that Chris Holt brought to do an analysis and to take a look at the economic impacts to me, puts him very solidly in the D range.
D plus, D range from Pat for Ward One Councillor Fred Francis. I realize right now, Pat's going to have to answer last for all of these because she's just going to run through the full list of everything about each councillor and then the rest of us can be like, yeah, what Pat said, that was good.
Okay, I won't be as.
No, 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 it's not any criticism at all. Uh, let's see how Don goes. Don, Fred Francis, impressions, grades?
Well, this is how I'm going to do it. Since it is the first day of Festivus for all you Seinfeld fans, I'm just going to air grievances.
I want to know how you're swiping on this first of all.
I'm going to swipe left on Fred. So Fred's not going to be able to hit on me later.
Missed connection.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to say I'm very happy Fred is healthy. I know he's going through cancer treatments the last couple of years and, you know, we're all glad he's, you know, doing well. On that, uh, you know, the issue I have with Fred and I've always had with Fred is he never seems to bring anything forward that doesn't seem predetermined by the mayor or the mayor has already thought this out and this is how we're going to play it. He just seems to follow whatever the mayor does. Even when it comes to his ward and even some of the things Pat had mentioned, there's nothing new from him. At least some of the other councillors, as we get to them, like them or hate them. At least they're trying things specific to their ward. All you really ever hear from Fred is, yeah, what he said and just points at the mayor. So I'm not giving grades. I'll, I think Pat's pretty accurate on everything she said there. Uh, I would just like to see him, you know, do something on his own, not just, you know, follow the mayor's footsteps and kind of be a lapdog. But I am glad he's healthy and doing well and I'm still swiping left.
You're looking to stay on the Christmas card list, but you've written yourself off of.
John, if you've listened to this show, you realize I am not on anyone's Christmas card list anymore. I'm surprised my house hasn't burned down, to be honest with you.
Well, I, you know, I don't know about burning down, whether or not the fire department shows up might be the concern that you need to have. Selective, uh, response. Doug, where do you stand? I'm curious, uh, where, where you come out.
Okay. So, um, I think in general, we're all kind of finding a consensus on this one. I graded Fred a D. For the record, he serves on nine committees, so he is tied with two other councillors for the lowest number of committees. Um, councillor Francis has been surprisingly invisible. Uh, I expected him to blossom in his second term a bit and that, that hasn't happened. Um, if anything, I think he had a higher profile in his first term. Now, I, I recognize that Mr. Francis has been ill. Um, that may be reflected, that may reflect some of his lower visibility. Um, but, uh, at the end of the day, um, we're, you know, we're grading based on performance. I agree with Pat that he has one note and he pretty much only sings that one note. His only passion seems to be for penny pinching. Um, what disturbs me the most, uh, is the lack of vision. You know, that was one of the criteria that I really, um, think is important for, uh, an elected official at council or for the mayor is to have a vision for the city and to be able to communicate it. Not only am I not sure what Mr. Francis's vision is besides, um, having the lowest possible, the lowest possible spending at the city, but he's also, I think, extremely risk averse in his communication, which, um, which limits his ability to communicate his vision. Um, I, I live in the ward and, um, besides ward meetings, you know, I don't see a lot of engagement from councillor Francis. Um, his engagement on social media is limited. As we've said, uh, his engagement in the media in general is pretty limited. Um, I do think he has an idea of what the interests of Ward One are, but I'm not sure how he, um, I'm not sure how he actually develops that, um, that view and, and how he tests that view. Um, finally, uh, I think that in this term, he has shown better command of the issues um, and has shown more knowledge on different files. There, there definitely has been progress since his first term. I just think not enough.
And that grade again?
A D.
Was a D. I came in at a C for Fred. You know, I, I used, uh, the rubric Doug that we had chatted about a bit, just looking at what some of the qualifiers were. And with his judgment, you know, I, I take it, I think that he's confident in what he's doing. I don't necessarily agree with where he's coming out, whether it's best for the whole of the community. Um, his communication lacking as well. Have to agree with you there. In terms of the personal issues that he was fighting for that I looked up, I mean, flooding has been one of the big things again, but that goes to what Pat was saying, just in terms of cost savings as a whole, as a mantra of just hammering that in. I'm the councillor who's going to be known for dollars and cents. This was again, it was seen with Urka and the fraudster that came in. He made the most noise about that. I actually thought he made the right call with, uh, Roseland, uh, as the board chair. And with keeping it closed, I was surprised. I thought he would go for a more populist push, to be perfectly honest. And he didn't. So that, that stood out. And then again, you know, downspout disconnection and the ward focus centric issues. It's just, it, it comes through. And again, maybe it's because of his health issues, didn't have the opportunity to use a more of a citywide platform. There's been again, as you said, Doug, lots of, uh, conversation about potential, uh, where he wants to go and what he wants to do. I specifically graded every councillor as well on just two issues that I thought stood out throughout the year. Outsourcing caretaking in the middle of pandemic. He voted yes to do that again, citing the financial constraints. I thought that was a really tough thing to be doing, especially as close as it is to the holiday season and just with, you know, the imagery of, uh, Grinchism that it could bring about. Um, and then finally, Pat, I got to agree with you. The other thing that I focused every councillor on was not their vote on the mega hospital, because I think we all knew what those votes were going to be at the end of the day. But it was whether or not they were for or against the motion to conduct the study as to what the actual impacts are going to be. And for a guy who preaches this dollars and cents mantra, mantra, to come out and vote against an independent financial analysis for what is this thing going to actually cost us at the end of the day? That was really surprising, but I think, you know, if people listen to the show as often as they do, we, this year, and you guys have been saying for the past couple of years, the, the faux fiscal conservatives, there are always those certain times that they shine through. And it's just clear that, you know, a lot of times it's an act. And when it comes down to actually spending the dollars and cents, the pocketbook is, uh, able to be, you know, ripped wide open and the money flows.
You know, for the record, even if you don't like our show, if you just sit here for an hour and watch John's background, it's very relaxing and mesmerizing. It's fascinating.
It's distracting me along the way. I might not be able to take a hit of this weed if, uh, I keep watching. Get way too zoned out from it. Jokes aside.
Drugs, kids.
Doug, let's start with you this time. Moving on to Ward Two Councillor Fabio Costante. What do you have, Matt?
Uh, I graded Fabio as an A. So, uh, he serves also on nine committees. My opinion, Fabio has been a really pleasant surprise as a rookie. Um, I think he clearly takes the concerns of his residents seriously, engages them frequently, but he doesn't always pander. He's shown backbone and that he's willing to brush aside loud voices if they don't match up with his vision and judgment. Uh, I think that Fabio is a little bit cautious and careful in his approach, but when the tough decisions have to be made, he's willing to make them. Um, I think it's important to note, you know, if, if there's anything that, uh, would inform these scores besides the performance of the councillor, it's the level of challenge that the ward represents. And, um, along with Ward Three, Ward Two, uh, Fabio's ward is one of the toughest wards in the city. Residents who face serious challenges. Um, Fabio has a, uh, big hill to climb to be able to get residents engaged, but he's been able to do that. Um, I also think that he has been surprisingly resilient in, um, pushing against the status quo when it's warranted. So for all of those reasons, I gave, uh, Fabio, uh, spoilers, the highest rating for any newcomer.
Wow. Go Fabio. You got the coveted Doug Sartori A. First time that we've heard that one this year. Pat, where do you see councillor Costante?
Yeah, I, um, I also thought, uh, Fabio, uh, um, was very, very strong. Now, um, I might be a bit more of a, a hard marker maybe, but I gave him a B plus, which is a very high grade in my book, uh, uh, very solid. Again, he is a new councillor and I'm trying to see he's tied, um, for, um, highest grade among the new councillors. Uh, I think he was a very first, strong first time councillor. He, I agree with Doug. He lives in a ward with a lot of challenges and he's, um, been principled in those. I think he's been challenged in some others, some of them that he inherited. Uh, but, and, and I thought he has strengthened as he's gone, to be honest with you. And I think that's probably why I didn't land him, um, in an A. Uh, but it took him a little while and there was a bit of a curve there. But I think he's reaching that point where he has found his voice and what a good voice it is. Uh, he's, he's terrific in debates. He's terrific in, um, in council when he, um, uh, reasons, uh, his decisions and provides reasons for his decisions. And, uh, this is, uh, well, if we compare it to the last council makeup, there's no question. Uh, there's been a huge improvement around that council table in, uh, rationale. And, uh, a big part of that is just a whole new makeup of who's new, but, uh, Fabio's a big part of that. So I, I gave him a big, uh, B plus and, and I think he's doing really well and I think he will continue. Um, this is where I think the difference between Fred Francis and, you know, not to compare, but there's your difference. Here's a, a young, a city councillor, um, first term and you're watching that potential sort of blossom and bloom, whereas you're not seeing that. And, and I think that that, uh, did impact my, my, uh, scoring in both ways. Yeah.
Well, thank you for that, Pat. Don, are you going to be dating Fabio Costante in 2021 or are you not interested?
I am going to swipe right on Fabio. I might swipe right and even send him a nude. How much I like them.
Is that a punishment?
That's, well, it depends on the receiver, right?
Depends on the angle of the photo too, Don.
A great start, guys.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, you know what? Everything you guys said I agree with. Uh, I think for the first time in, probably since I've been back in Windsor, which has been about 21 years now, uh, that ward finally has a good councillor. Uh, that ward, in my opinion, had been left vacant by the councillors. They've had the last 15 years or three or four terms. And I think Fabio's really made a difference. He really advocates for, you know, the sandwich area, especially the business area. Uh, he's out there. He's promoting the area. You see him on social media, talking about what's going on in that area quite a bit. Uh, so yeah, big fan of Fabio. He'd be my rookie councillor of the year if we were giving out wards and, uh, yeah, I think he's doing a fabulous job. Wait for that picture, Fabio. It's going to be fantastic.
Now, Don didn't say who the nude was. So, you know, it might still be a good gift.
Obviously, it's the one Doug sent me. I'm just going to forward it over to him.
That was the one I sent to Doug though.
I was going to make a Jewish joke, but I won't.
Think we can all figure out what it might have been. We could, we can determine who's this. Anyways, councillor Costante received the only straight A that I actually had as well, um, which was surprising. Um, his communication skills are through the roof. I really see him as being a, I don't want to say a follow-up, but in the same vein to, uh, councillor Kuzmerchik when he was on council, just a very accessible, very engaging, very transparent councillor. Really appreciate the way that he engages. I got to agree with Doug that he's willing to, uh, be principled and stand up for what he believes in, even when it, there's pushback significantly in his own ward. You know, however, we saw him, he saw pushing for landscape neglect bylaws that he was able to gain traction with. Um, looked for a council vote regarding major emergency decisions after the mayor cancelled transit Windsor unilaterally. So I really give him credit for, you know, not only pushing back against his own constituents for when he sees things as being right, but being willing to really come out and take a stance, bring forward motions against the grain politically here in the city. That takes a lot of work. We know that this is a, uh, there, there are, there's an elected leadership with support that sometimes makes it easy to go after councillors, sometimes uses its, uh, tools to go after private citizens when they decide to speak up too much in public. So the fact that he's willing to do this, you know, really good for him. Really thought it was good again. You know, he was against outsourcing caretaking and he was for the motion to conduct the independent study for the mega hospital. So I was, uh, very impressed by the councillor all in all. So let's go on to Ward Three. We'll start with you, Don. Are you dating Reno next year or are you leaving him at the curb?
Uh, you know, I'm usually pretty hard on Reno just because I live in his ward, but yeah, I will swipe right on Reno. Uh, I think he's, uh, I think he's, uh, a lot of the things he's done in the past are starting to come to fruition with a lot of development that's happening downtown, the CIP and just advocating for giving developers kind of a, a deal on if they build an area. So I think that's, uh, finally starting to, you know, show some fruit on those trees. Uh, he's, uh, he's been a little quieter than I think this year than he has been in the past. Uh, not out there as much, or maybe he just blocked me on Facebook, which I completely understand. Uh, so yeah, swipe right. Think Reno's doing a good job and keep up the good work.
Pat, what's your thoughts on Reno?
Well, I don't, I don't know, uh, what, what Don means about quieter, maybe on social media. Um, and, uh, if that's, if that's what you're going by, I have found, uh, the opposite, uh, frankly, with, uh, Reno Bordel. And he's also my city councillor and actually in, in, you know, fair disclosure, although I certainly have met no, uh, um, almost all councillors, some more, some less. I certainly, um, uh, Reno lives down the street from me and is my councillor. But, um, I, I find that he's almost to the point of like, can you stop? He's been in the paper and on the news constantly. You get into the car, he's on the radio. Uh, you turn on the news, he's, uh, on CTV, he's on CBC, he's on, you know, the Windsor Star. There is no question that when you take a look at the work ethic, uh, that Reno Bordel puts into the job, that is a full-time job. It may very well be because of the, the, um, he has the downtown ward. And certainly, um, in addition to, when you take a look at it, uh, generally speaking, there are two or three wards that have, sort of priority type of, um, going concerns that impact the entire city. But of course, impact, um, the concern of the ward councillor that represent them specifically. But he's also on, on all issues and it's largely because of the committees that he sits on. And again, I mean, there are, let's face it, there are committees and there are committees, folks. Okay? So you've got your international relations committee and some things, and then you've got your planning committee or the police board, right? Like when you take a look at Reno and I don't know how many, he sits on two BIAs. Uh, when you take a look at the work and all of that work is connected. Um, I find that he is very knowledgeable because of the connections that he's made on the work that he's doing. He's connecting his work from the business association to the planning committees. You're absolutely right. There is a councillor who came in with vision. And he's seeing that work come to fruition. Take a look at the developments that are happening. You know, this has been a push by, um, um, people like Reno Borland. Actually Reno Bordel, let me just, just be clear. Um, so he's achieved a lot. I think he's, um, uh, become a little softer around the edges. Uh, he's still authentic, which I like. Certainly one of, um, uh, the two, you know, most authentic councillors. I think he's still that. But he's, you know, he's had his knocks along the way. And, uh, I think he's, and maybe why he's not on social media as much, or maybe he just simply doesn't have time. I, I, I struggled with this one because I don't know whether it's because I pay more attention to Reno Bordel and I sit on the BIA with him. Um, and, and he's my reward councillor. But in many ways, the more I pay attention to someone, the more I find, you know, criticism because as, as I say, I mean, you know, if, if, you know, um, I'm, I'm critical. So given that, I do see him so much in the paper and, 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 and follow what he does so much. And I have so little actually to be critical of. I, I'm, I'm just going to be straight up and I'm going to give what I actually think he deserves. And that's an A plus. I think he's a top councillor. Um, I think he's, uh, brought a lot of change into our city. Um, and because of his presence on council, especially in this second term.
Teacher's pet. A plus.
He delivers.
He hasn't made one mistake this year, not one.
Well, so an A plus is not, um, is not that you don't make mistakes. So I just want to be really clear. Um, and a B plus is a great mark too. So, um, an A plus is however, um, in the way that we see it, is someone who consistently excels in what they do. And I do see that. Um, I, I actually do see that. Yeah.
Okay. Hey, that's fair.
Now, now in my defense, maybe I don't see him in the media enough because I only get all my news from 4chan. So I don't know. That could be a problem. Maybe it's me.
I don't know. Anybody else? Is it just me? I mean, I, like, I, I, to be honest, and so I don't listen to a lot of AM 800. That's not my radio station. And frankly, the only time I really listen to the radio is, you know, And frankly, the only time I really listen to the radio is, you know, when I'm looking to hear something. But a certain somebody who shares a vehicle in this household listens to AM 800. So on the rare occasion that I get into the vehicle, that's the station it's on. And it, it's like, I can't, it's so true. It must be just my luck. But I get into the car and the radio comes on and there is Reno Bordel and I'm like, for real? I hear him all the time.
Reno's full time job is actually just sitting, listening to AM 800 and calling in whenever it's an appropriate moment.
I think he's done some tremendous work also on the police board in the, the transition that is happening on the police board. I think he belongs to a lot of important organizations that are incidental to city council. And has been able to learn very quickly and make the connections that are needed to make things happen. I also think that he has learned to, I feel that he has decided, and that might be part of the learning curve, that it's better to accomplish something and not get the credit for it. In other words, pass the ball, let somebody else dunk it, if that's what it takes, as long as it's accomplished. And I think that's, that's also worth commending.
I'll take it. I'll go next with this. Reno, I had at a A minus. But I'm actually gonna, when we were, when you were having that conversation there, Pat, with your ideas, I want to raise him up to the A. And the reason for it, I threw in a couple of handicaps for my councillors in terms of whether they get an extra point or a lower grade because of actions that they've taken. And what just popped in my head with Reno, when you were talking about him being the councillor for downtown and the more work that that might come with it, was it hit me like a just brick in the face. We used to have four councillors representing the downtown core with Olet Avenue split right down the middle. And two representing one side and two representing the other side. So wards two and wards three, I believe it was, or three and four, whatever it was, back before we switched. And so the fact that he's the only councillor now, that is, it's, he's got so much more work to represent the downtown core. One would hope that he would have the mayor on side for most of the things that he does, which, I mean, obviously, it's not like that is the biggest bromance between the two of them. So I gave him a bit of a handicap there. I also really liked when the city decided to do the transit reimbursements after the mayor unilaterally shut it down. Councillor Bordel was very clear. He's called it insulting that we only offered $25, $50 and $75 payments. Standing up for your constituents and being willing to call things out for bullshit as they are, that will always get big marks for me, you know, challenge power, even when you're involved in being that power. Also, you know, the fact that he made such an attack, and this was on one of our last in person shows, and it got a media write up on Blackburn. But councillor Bordel called for the public to stop donating to the downtown mission when we found out about the deal falling through at the library and all the chicanery that went on with it. And that's, you know, it's a strong and bold thing to, you know, just call things out like that. Opened himself up to a wide bevy of attacks. But he was willing to fight for what he saw right here. And that was, you know, he saw it, or at least I interpreted that, you know, the city ended up getting taken advantage of in that situation. And he called it out for what it was. So for consistently standing up for his constituents and for that little bit of a handicap for being the only councillor where there used to be four, given him an A, he's now up there with councillor Costante. Doug, am I wrong? Am I right? What do you think?
So I graded Reno at an A plus also. And I think an A plus should be very difficult to achieve, but not impossible. And the reason that, and look at people, people know that I have been a supporter of councillor Bordel in the past. And you can take my comments with whatever grain of salt you want. But the fact is that when I support someone, there's a reason for it. And these are my reasons. Councillor Bordel is extremely hardworking. I don't know if there is anyone else on council who works as hard and is as thoughtful as councillor Bordel. Especially given that Ward Three is an extremely tough ward to represent. But beyond that, he also more than carries his weight on committees. Councillor Bordel serves on 11 committees, but then when you think about what some of those committees are, the police board, the library board, the downtown BIA, there are, there are some boards and committees that councillor Bordel sits on that are really crucial and I would imagine carry a pretty heavy workload. Reno is not afraid to engage with constituents. I think he's very in tune with his community. But he's also not afraid to challenge and disagree and sometimes disagree publicly with constituents, which I think is important. Reno has the most clearly articulated vision for the city of anyone on council, including the mayor. And that is probably my number one criteria for a political representative is to have the vision. He is the most effective critic of the mayor on council, and I think he serves a crucial role. In fact, I think that Reno's criticism has made Mayor Dilkins better. And, and for that kind of dynamic to result in better governance, I think is something pretty special. Reno is extremely consistent with his values, but he's not ideological. He's not married to a particular ideology. But you can see his values in every decision that he makes and every statement that he makes. If I were going to write in red pen on the report card, something that councillor Bordel should work on, I think sometimes he needs to pick his battles better. That would be the, you know, I think sometimes you want to keep your powder dry for another day. That would be the only, the only thing that I would find fault with so far. So that's my, my score for councillor Bordel.
Interesting. Another A plus. And, you know, I, I really think that your point about how he has, I don't know, inadvertently, advertently, maybe, helped to push the mayor towards becoming, you know, a better politician himself. Like that's, that's, that is a good thing. Arguably, it's a good thing. I mean, personal issues that we all may have against, you know, certain elected officials. We arguably want to have a stronger functioning government here that represents people better. So even if it means that the mayor becomes a more adept sparring partner in the political battlefield. At the end of the day, you know, the policy should always be debated at the highest level. So that's, that's really interesting.
Yeah, I think a good rivalry makes the participants in that rivalry better. And, and I think that's the case here. I do think that, I don't think that Mayor Dilkins would be performing nearly as well if he didn't have effective criticism.
Off the Christmas card list from Mayor Dilkins, I think we all will be. Let's, not that I've ever gotten one. Let's go on to the next ward, Ward Four, Chris Holt. I'm gonna start off with this one. Gave him an A minus. Really like how Chris has handled himself. He works full time as well. So being able to do what he does while maintaining a full time job and being an entrepreneur owning a brewery, I mean, it's, or co owning a brewery, excuse me, not to speak poorly. Very impressive that he's able to keep such a handle on the files that he does, communicate as well as he does. I also really appreciate his work life balance and he's very clear about that on social media. You'll see often people trying to nitpick with him on certain issues. And you'll see him engage to a certain point that when it becomes clear that it's just a matter of trolling and people trying to evoke emotional responses. He makes clear, I'm spending the night with my wife. I'm not going to get into this with you for the next five hours. This is my time. I'm only paid as a part time councillor. I don't think he said that, but the point being, even though he's paid as a part time councillor, he treats it as a full time job with all of his other responsibilities. But he also is willing to draw that line and say, if you want to deal with this, do it properly. Write me a letter, call up the office and leave me a phone message and I'll get back to you on proper times. But I'm not going to be at your disposal because you want to get into a Facebook argument because you had maybe too much Chardonnay that night. So I really do appreciate that stance. He brought forward an issue, you know, he wanted to rename alleys. So there's an administration report coming back on that. You know, it's one of those issues that stands out. Personally, I really don't care about it, the merits of it. It's a good project for a councillor, though, to be able to say, hey, look, there's now alleys that are named after, you know, notable Windsorites, memorials, there's, it's, I don't want to say it's a legacy project, but it's a good thing to be able to point to, to show, you know, we're preserving our heritage, our, our history. And then, you know, he was also pushing for e-scooters to be allowed on multi use trails because he didn't want to discourage tourism from the region, which, you know, again, being willing to take stances on issues that are completely new. Other municipalities are making the mistakes, but he was willing to say like, we shouldn't just say no to this. I like to see that. So, you know, A minus. I like Chris Holt a lot. He's a great guy. Doug?
So I gave Chris Holt a B minus. He serves on 12 committees for the record. So I think there's a lot to like about Chris Holt's approach. He is courageous, consistent and committed to his vision. On the flip side, I think sometimes Chris is a little too inflexible and a little bit ideological in his approach. I think he's effective in council chambers and sometimes he's a lonely voice representing his viewpoint. And that's a hard thing to do. It's a hard thing to do under pressure like that. And I think it's really important to, to recognize what it takes for a person to do that. I've called him the, this is a Lord of the Rings reference, guys, you're welcome, the Tom Bombadil of Ward Four before, meaning that he's extremely effective in his ward, but has a little bit less of an impact outside it. And I think that's the, the reason why I graded him just a little bit lower. Because, you know, he's a very effective and popular ward councillor. But I don't think that he has carried the same load on citywide issues as some of his peers. I don't think that councillor Holt is, is quite as able to effectively use the media as a vehicle to communicate his vision. A B minus is a terrific grade and although I think there are things that could be improved on, you know, I think we, we need more councillors like Chris Holt.
I've never been a huge Tolkien fan, so I've seen the movies. I haven't read. What, what makes him a Bombadil?
So Tom Bombadil is all powerful in his forest, but when you get outside of his forest, he doesn't really have much to do and then he doesn't actually have much of an impact on the wider world. So, so it's a, you know, a pretty apt descriptor for my point of view.
That's a good metaphor. Oh, that works. Okay, Pat, let's hear your Lord of the Rings reference for Chris Holt.
Well, I, I, I'm not, not my forte, but interesting that Doug would say that. Because I find that one of Chris's strengths and if we're gonna, you know, would say he has an ideology. And I think that is as an environmentalist and the issue of climate and the issue of good urban planning. And, and as a result, those, those issues often as it, when it comes from the lens of city council and city council issues do tend to focus on the urban core of the city. But talk about big picture when it comes to issues like climate change, for example. So, and that's actually how I met Chris many, many, many years ago when he ran as a Green Party candidate in an election that I was working on for another party. Those who are listeners of the show might know which one that is. But I have, I, I think that Chris is at a stage in his point that I don't know and I don't see him having any other ambitions for any other office other than the one that he performs now. And so I cut him a little bit of slack, slack on that sense. I do agree with Doug, though. I do agree that other than the lens of those values that he has and he brings that strength by providing that perspective to city council, which was long overdue and needed, that, yeah, not going to care too much about, and I don't want to, you know, mention, I don't want to insult any other wards by mentioning their, you know, issue. But yeah, he may not care so much about that. I cut him a little bit of slack on that because I don't think he intends to do anything more with that. And, and I mentioned the word authentic earlier. I think he is. I think John mentioned why. He, you know, he's pretty real. He's gonna tell you, you know, what he does and what he doesn't do. And I respect that. I think he's performed solidly. I think he's taken, I think you know where his values are. And he votes with those values. And I gave him an A minus, which is obviously a very good, very good mark. Yeah.
I see that Chris did not drop off a six pack at your house. So could have been an A plus.
Well, you know, we can compare the reasons why, you know, I hate the little minus because minuses, I take away something from him. But really, I think it's still an A and it, you know, could be anywhere within an A. I think Chris and Reno are within range of each other in many, many ways. But I think that Reno has definitely not only looked at Ward Three, but really taken big picture approach at, at the city. I think Chris has on certain issues and, and maybe not so much on others. And, and really, he's a ward councillor. So for that reason, I think he's performed very well. I don't know why I gave him, you know, you mentioned earlier, you know, what's, what is it? Is he perfect? I think he, I think he's solid and I think it's a really good mark. So I, yeah, I'm right. I should be getting some beer.
We all should be getting some beer. Come on, Chris. We could have given you A pluses across the board. Don, what are you gonna say to get your six pack? Are you dating Chris or not?
Well, I'm gonna swipe left on Chris, but I might give him a like on match.com if I find him later.
We have our first swipe left. If I had the soundboard hooked up right now, there'd be a very dramatic theme. Why?
I swiped left on Francis too. Please pay attention, John.
No, no, first left on the good guys.
Oh, and the good guy. Well, that's, you know, you know, I think what, whatever he said is pretty correct. Chris to me is, Chris and I have completely different political standings and philosophical standings on a lot of things. I think he's a good ward councillor. I think he really looked out for Ward Four. But I think that's kind of where it ends. I, I think on big picture things, I think he is a little, he just kind of sticks to his ideology and doesn't, he's pretty inflexible. And man, I don't mean that as a bad thing, but that's kind of how I see it. I think he's done a good job, but he's been there for a couple of terms now. I think he's been good and consistent throughout. So not that I don't like the guy. I think he's doing a good job. Just, you know, he's not my type.
Let's keep you going, Don, on this one. Let's figure out if Ward Five councillor Ed Sleeman is your type.
Well, Ed, see, I'm gonna have problems with Ed because, all right, I'm gonna swipe left on Ed. And look, I don't want to say anything bad about Ed. I think Ed really cares about his ward. I think Ed really takes his job seriously. I just, how can I say this without sounding like a complete jerk? I just, I just don't think Ed is capable of being a city councillor anymore. And that's not to say anything negative. I really think it's an age thing. I don't think he's that healthy right now. And I think it's time for Ed to retire. And that's not because I think he's a horrible person. I think Ed's a very nice guy. I've known a lot of people in his ward over the years who said, and even some things I have done in that ward over there for some people, you know, just making some phone calls. He's always been very responsive. He's been, you know, if you ask him to do something, he does it. I, I, you know, I, I just, I just think Ed's time is done. And I don't think that's a bad thing. I just think sometimes, you know, when, when you, when you're, when you've done the job, just do it. And I think it's time for someone else to take over in Ward Five who can, you know, kind of put a little more effort into it. And it's just, you know, it sounds horrible. It's, it's just an age thing. I know Ed's having some health issues and I just don't think he can keep up anymore. But I think he's been a very good councillor over the years and, you know, he should be proud of the work he's done there. So good on you, Ed, and wish you all the best.
Not gonna be a date in 2021, though.
You know, I think he's married anyway. It's all right.
It could have been a really spicy situation, Don, but you left that opportunity on the table. Doug, where do you stand on this one?
So it sounds to me, based on Don's comments, that a lot of the thought process was similar on councillor Sleeman. I gave councillor Sleeman a D minus. I will mention he serves on an astonishing 18 committees. Councillor Sleeman's reputation in office has been that he is excellent at constituency work and maybe a bit less effective on the citywide issues or in debate. And I think there's a place for that in a, in a council of 10. I think there's a place for that. And up until 2018, I think me, was a net contributor to council despite always being a little bit quieter. In this term, his contribution has been quite limited. And I think he's had some real difficulty being effective in debate. So it's hard to identify any concrete contribution he's made this term besides being a reliable vote for the mayor. I will say that councillor Sleeman is unfailingly kind and courteous. He has a reputation for being extremely hardworking. And, and, you know, the guy serves on 18 committees, but at the end of the day, I just think he doesn't make the kind of contribution that I expect from a city councillor. And so for that reason, I gave him a D minus.
Pat, where do you come in?
Yeah, this is a difficult one, I think, for the reasons that have been already stated. Yeah, this is a difficult one. I think for the reasons that have been, uh, already stated, I gave Ed a C minus. Um, and I think that, you know, if this conversation is taking place again next year, and certainly if Ed runs for office again, um, it'll be a completely different mark. So, um, there are some qualifiers there for, for it. I, um, I thought the, the fact that he does sit on so many committees, uh, is just astounding. Now, I, I do, um, agree with Doug, you know, what contribution is being made there? And I don't think there's anybody here who's not going to say, and anybody who knows Ed or anybody's ever heard of Ed or anybody who knows, anyone who knows Ed knows, Ed is a super nice guy. But, you know, this is not what we're, really, we're here to sort of say what it, how do we score them uh, on their performance as city councillors and while he's there and he's committed. And, uh, I think he cares. Um, and I think he cares about being a city councillor and he cares about the city. And he's made really good contributions. I, I have to say, I agree that I think at some point, people who love Ed should have a conversation, uh, because he has a legacy to leave behind. And the few times that I had opportunity to watch city council, to be honest with you, now that it, you know, it's available. People can watch and, and, uh, to, to watch that one thing that happens all the time. And that is that there's a motion, it's happening pretty quickly and it's very clear that Ed is looking to find out, I'm just going to say it, how he should vote. That should not be happening, right? And I, I don't know that that's, I don't, I would like to think that maybe he hasn't caught, you know, um, what's happening or what motion is it? I'm more concerned that sometimes it's, you know, I'm not really sure how I should be voting. And I need to look at somebody who's going to tell me how to vote rather than I'm not sure where we are in the process. Um, and, and that's, that's not fair to anyone. That's not fair to constituents. Um, that, that does not bring an independent voice to the council table. Um, perhaps that's who we are, maybe because we are, you know, we're a podcast about political commentary. We have a certain bias that we like to see as much independent thinking as possible. Yeah, sure, we might criticize, uh, folks that we don't agree with. Um, but as I mentioned earlier, uh, even Fred, who I gave a low grade for other reasons, I, uh, commended that he was, you know, he, he pulled against the grain on the, on one of those issues. So, um, I think that Ed, um, I gave him that grade, uh, because it's indicative of he's there, he's, um, it's not bad, but it's, it's, it's getting bad. It's getting bad.
Yeah, I don't agree, or I don't disagree rather with, I think, anything that's been said so far. I had him at a D plus. Biggest thing, you know, is just where is he? You, you don't really see him much in terms of the media. He's, he really fights, you know, for those specific ward issues, you know? Resident calls him up and has a complaint, it gets dealt with. Business has a problem, calls him up, it gets dealt with. But things that break through, you know, there really aren't anything. I think, Pat, I agree with you. The, the seeking of direction in terms of voting is a big concern. It's becoming more and more evident almost as each year goes by on council. Um, and you know, that's, it's just, it's, it's upsetting, I think, for, for numerous reasons. Um, but what did stand out for him for me that I think might have made it a D plus? His evolution on cannabis retail and his justification. He was against it initially and like, whatever, you want to be against it. It was a big deal to change things. He said he was against it, but as he saw the demand for more access, whether or not he actually studied that, but he said it was clear that across the country, Canadians want to have stores and he changed his stance and he started voting to approve retail stores as they came through. Regardless of the fact that the city doesn't have any impact, put input on the matter. I thought it was good to see, you know, that growth, that evolution. Um, and then one thing I will disagree with you, Pat, in terms of like what he did get done. He blocked the approval of the exemption for the truck terminal in Ford City. Um, there was a lot of concerns environmentally from residents and business owners that it wasn't a fit in the neighborhood to have that big truck yard. And I got to agree with it. So I'm kudos for him to, you know, get that done. But then again, he voted to outsource caretakers and he voted against the independent study. And those two really feel like ones that it was just like, which way am I supposed to vote? Because, you know, I know which way I'm supposed to vote. So for those reasons, I'm going to give him a D plus. And I think we can move on to.
Well, we can move on, although I, I gotta say that listening.
I, I did, I did the thing where I provoked Pat.
Well, no, I, I, but I, I'm, I'm just saying, I think you swayed me a little too. Um, I might, I might rethink this grade a little bit. I think you're, you know, I think I was trying to be as fair as possible and, you know, sometimes, you know, we take a look and say, well, are we going to adjust for other reasons? And, you know, uh, there were others that tried to adjust, you know, even for Fred. Um, but we don't know what to read into why. And, and I never like to get personal. Um, I think, you know, in, in Ed's case, there's no question as well as, as, as Fred said, that there were health, health reasons along the way. And so these are very difficult, um, discussions. But I think you swayed me that in fact, maybe, um, I should be harsher on that grade frankly. And one of the reasons is, is that you're absolutely right. There's, there were some really significant votes that came down. And if we had, uh, someone who was independently assessing issues, uh, those could have resulted in completely different, um, outcomes. And so therefore that is important. I, I think that I'm, I'm, I, I think you're right. And I'm, I'm, to be honest, I'm rethinking that and I think that there might be a downgrade on that vote.
You're lowering the grade.
Yeah, I am, I am.
I actually thought you were gonna raise it for a second.
No, but here's why, because now that I think of it, I'm like, well, you know, it's not so bad. But you know what? It is. It is bad. Um, there are serious implications that have come from various, um, tight votes where he simply voted. Um, I'm going to assume, and I think, and I don't think this is unfair, that he looked for direction and voted in a particular way and that changed, you know, everything. So frankly, that, that had serious repercussions. So, yeah. Okay.
This is why you listen to the program, folks.
It's why you have a Marx meeting.
That's right. Now, since we're all changing votes, I'm going to change my vote to Ed can take me on on a date. It's going to be a pity date and I'm not putting out, but just because I like the guy and he can, he can.
I find this increasingly uncomfortable, Don.
Is he paying or are you paying?
Oh, no, he's paying, trust me.
Let's go. Let's go on to Ward six councillor, Joanne Geniak. Doug, where did you rank councillor Geniak?
I, uh, scored Joanne Geniak a C minus. Um, councillor Geniak serves on nine committees. Uh, so think about that. She is, um, among the lowest, uh, one of tied for the lowest, uh, in terms of her committee workload. And, and partly I think this grade reflects the fact that I think in the past, um, councillor Geniak has been a more effective councillor. If you think back to the 2014 to 2018 term, uh, councillor Geniak actually had a pretty difficult thing to do, which was to be part of the council majority, um, without being, uh, without being a, a, um, a lackey to the mayor. And I think that she did a pretty good job in the 2014 to 2018 term under those conditions of, of taking an independent line at times and, uh, and showing herself to be more than, um, what I perceive some of the other folks around the table in that term are. And compare that to this term, um, I just haven't seen the same level of energy or, or even frankly, the level of interest, uh, from councillor Geniak as I have in the past. My perception is that she's kind of mailing it in, if I'm honest. Uh, I also think that considering her experience, she is one of the most experienced councillors, especially if you consider she was a multi-term, uh, s- school board trustee before she served on council. Um, some of those policy choices, uh, leave me scratching my head. Um, the, uh, uh, the proposal for a bylaw enforcement blitz, um, you know, versus simply funding more bylaw officers, uh, it strikes me as one that, that really had me scratching my head at the time. And I, I think to be totally frank, councillor Geniak needs to decide if she wants to be a city councillor or not. Um, because, because she is not meeting the standards that she set for herself.
I think, John, we can't hear you.
Sorry, you don't think Doug, that your grade that you gave her then is too high considering that you just said she's missing the mark?
Uh, I don't because I, I think, Joe, look, Joanne Geniak, um, I think at one time, um, you know, would someone that you would have considered to be a potential mayor of the city. Uh, you know, there is, I think there's significant level of ability there. I think that, that, uh, councillor Geniak is pretty smart. Um, and, uh, and so I think that there's a reflection of the fact that even with a low level of interest, she's still able to be reasonably effective. Um, so when you, when you put it in context of the distribution of grades that I gave, um, to others, you know, I think I, I'd really tried to calibrate them, not just, um, in themselves, but against each other. And I think if you see where, uh, councillor Geniak falls, she falls in the bottom half for someone with her level of experience and, uh, with her amount of natural ability. I think that that's, um, you know, that's pretty fair.
Not to focus too much on you, Doug, but I do have one more follow-up that I want to ask. Do you think that her having lost the Windsor to come see election back in, uh, 2015? And then just winning reelection, do you think that it's just, you know, the potential, just gonna do this again and then on the way out? But, you know, I tried to go higher up, not really interested anymore. So I'm just gonna write it in.
Um, I really don't know. Uh, I don't, I, you know, I've only spoken to councillor Geniak once. Um, I don't really know the person, so it's hard for me to say. I don't want to speculate about her motives, but all I can see is the performance and it just, it doesn't meet the standard she set for herself.
Okay, Don?
Uh, gonna have to swipe left on, uh, councillor Geniak too. And a lot of it is for the same points that Doug said. Uh, councillor Geniak, to me, was a very good councillor for a long time. Uh, I think you might be right. I don't know, have any information on that, John. But I, I think after she kind of lost the conservative run in that election. And yeah, I, I feel kind of the same that Doug had said that she seems like, I don't know if it's disinterest or just she's relegated herself to, eh, I'm just going to be a councillor, so I don't have to try as hard. I think she's very intelligent. I think she actually thinks through a lot of the things that she's voting on. Uh, even, you know, we kind of say she's, you know, kind of goes along with the mayor all the time. And that was a bit of the same with Mayor Francis. Uh, but I think that's just, you know, idea ideologically, they're kind of the same kind of people. They're a bit, you know, on the conservative side of things. I think she's been a very good councillor. I think she's still an effective councillor. I just, yeah, like Doug's, I don't think she's trying as hard as she used to. And, you know, maybe she's just lost interest. I don't know, but she's kind of, you know, her star is kind of falling a little bit and, you know, so I'm gonna have to swipe left on her.
Another leftward swipe. I was worried that this was happening in my haste to keep the show format exciting. I've been switching up from box to box on this zoom here. Pat, did I ask you your thoughts on, uh, Joanne Geniak? No? Okay, please.
No, you didn't yet, uh, but I'm going to keep it short because I thought that Doug really articulated, uh, what I think very well as well. And in fact, I, I made a couple of notes and, uh, very, very, um, similar perspective. I too actually noted the, uh, by law enforcement on the blitz. Um, but more importantly, not only was that not a really a sound sort of, uh, measure um, or manner in which to address what she felt was the issue. I thought what was more telling was the second issue with the second motion, which was to actually refer that matter to the, uh, next budget to deal with it in a way to actually, um, look at it and put money towards it. And she voted against that. Um, and, and she too has sided very many and very often, uh, with, uh, Fred Francis and for the same reasons. She is also fiscally, um, it's one of her sort of, um, she speaks often about fiscal prudence. Not that there's anything wrong with fiscal prudence, um, except that when it comes at the cost of a larger picture. And in fact, she's been on council. She's certainly a veteran city councillor. And, um, things have changed on this council. I do think that her star, uh, is not shining as bright as it once did. Um, and I gave her a C minus, in fact, the same grade that, um, um, that Doug gave. So I'm gonna leave it there because I know we, we said we wanted to end by a certain time, which is not going to happen if we ever want to get to everybody else in the mayor. So I'm going to leave that, uh, for Joanne, but I think it's, it's again, because it's, um, in retro, it's, it's in comparison to who she was, how she performed, regardless of, of how, whether you agree with her or not and where she's at. I did notice when I did a quick search on the news that she was the acting mayor on March the 14th, when, uh, there had to be a city announcement in order to, uh, talk about the shutting down of public facilities uh, because of the first wave of this pandemic, because the mayor, who we may or may not get to today, uh, was in Jordan. So, um, I, I think that, uh, you know, Joanne, you asked, I think, the, the question and I, I just feel like I want to answer it, John, because you asked it of Doug, even though I had the same opinion, but the same score. And that's because I think that, um, she still performs in a way that she's not embarrassing to the city. And, and that's one of my litmus tests, right? Like, would I be embarrassed that this person is representing our community? And I have to say, not necessarily. Do I have a longstanding issue that she's the only woman on city council? And we might as well have 10 men. Um, I do, but that's not necessarily, uh, relevant to this report card. That's, that's who Joanne is.
Interesting. I gave her a C minus, but councillor Geniak got a bump up to a C for dealing with the pandemic while Mayor Dilkins was trapped in Jordan. I don't think she had expected to have to take on that role and overseeing, you know, the shuttering of city facilities, being the face of closing down Windsor. That, that gave it a, that was a strong handicap enough to bump her up a, uh, from a C minus to the C. Um, she brought forward there a bid to regulate Airbnb's coming to fruition. So, you know, had something that was followed through with. Um, her bylaw blitz, I got to agree on that. It's clear that wanted something splashy, wanted to get some noise made, but wasn't willing to actually do the thing that would have done it, which is, you know, hire more bylaw officers. But, you know, I guess God forbid we hire more city employees because councillor Geniak has made clear through outsourcing votes over the past number of years, her stance on that specifically. So we can go on now to our wild card of the night, Ward seven councillor Juwan Gill. We made a decision to not grade councillor Gill too early. We had all graded councillor Gill, but we decided, uh, that it was just not fair. So we're going to do a progress report. We're calling it too early to call progress report. Doug, how is progress?
So it is really early days. Uh, we have not had a, a chance to see a whole lot of councillor Gill. Um, my view would be that, uh, councillor Gill needs to work on, um, his communication. I think he needs to think about how he is going to differentiate himself from others around the table who have similar, um, a similar sort of ideological or values bent. Um, and I think that councillor Gill has yet to demonstrate, um, independence on council. But again, it's very early days. So those are the things that I look for. Um, so rather, maybe rather than a progress report, these would be, um, things that, you know, notes to work on, uh, as, as, uh, you move towards the first quiz.
Sounds like if this was a pass fail, it's a pass.
I just don't think there's enough information yet.
Can't even give the pass fail. That's fair.
I'm not gonna swipe one way or the other.
Don, you are.
Uh, no, I can't because he's new and I don't think he's on Tinder yet.
There's no profile photo. I can't make a decision.
Yeah, he's still one of those gray, you know, kind of side things, profile things. But he's fantastic on MySpace, so I'll give him that much for right now.
Pat, how does this fit into the ministries, uh, guidelines?
No, same. Uh, too early to tell. Depends on how you want to judge it. Do you want to say that everybody starts with a hundred percent and you just lose the grades? Or do you want to say you have to earn them, uh, no matter how you look at it? He's sitting sort of somewhere there. Um, the, you know, this is not a, not, not one that you can grade right now. He hasn't done anything, um, notable to, uh, um, to take away grades. He certainly hasn't done anything remarkable. Uh, but nor, nor can one really expect that in these circumstances. Um, um, generally speaking, for somebody who's been in for such a short period of time, so.
Well, you know, I looked at it as the only things that I graded on were the gun, those two issues that I put to everyone, even though we pulled aside him specifically. He voted for outsourcing caretakers. He voted against the independent study of the mega hospital. Voted in full lockstep with the mayor and the mayor's, I don't know, supporters or, uh, you know, uh, you know, fair-minded, uh, councillors who feel the same way. So for that reason alone, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go yes or no, but I'll put up a red flag as I don't want to return to the council of last term. And it sets in pretty worrisome precedent right now. So that's my opinion on that. Ward eight, I'll start off with Gary Cashat councillor. Gave him a B. I like him. I like him. I think he's an interesting guy. It's, it's a new mix for council. Really just, you know, matter of fact spoken, just here's where I'm coming from. Here's why I think this and here's why I'm pushing for it. He pushed to save curling at Roseland. I disagreed with that decision. It failed. But the guy came out, he made the push for it, voiced his reasons for it. So kudos to him for, you know, during, even I would, I would think I might criticize other people for making similar decisions for, during a pandemic, but for a reasonably new councillor still to be willing to push for constituents directly like that, thought it was interesting. Also his push for open air fire permits. Um, I thought that was a really cool one. Wanted to see that. I think pushing for one. I think pushing for one year or at least the full pandemic season, rather than opting for a full three year thing, might've seen it pushed forward. Might've limited it the way that he opted for. Um, he voted against outsourcing caretaking. He voted for the motion to conduct the mega hospital study. So solid B across the board with councillor Cashack. Don, are you voting swiping left or swiping right?
I'm going to swipe right on, uh, Mr. Cashack, uh, for some of the same things you said. I think he looks, I don't think he really has an ideology.
I think he looks.
No. I think he looks fabulous. I think, I think he looks at each individual situation on its own merits. I don't think he, you know, if you want to compare him to Chris, and that was my kind of knock on Chris is you know how Chris is going to vote on stuff. Uh, Gary, I think looks at each, you know, situation individually and votes what he thinks. And again, he's very matter of fact, very straightforward. And, uh, I like that about him. I think there's more councillors that need to maybe take a little bit after him and, you know, vote specifically to that situation as opposed to, well, I always vote this way or that way. Uh, so yeah, I think he's first time, you know, new councillor doing a good job. I have nothing bad to say about him.
Right on. Pat?
Yeah. Gave him a solid B like you did, John. Um, I, I think, um, you know, what I like about Gary is, um, what, what, uh, Don referred to, and you don't really know, um, where he's going to land. And I think he's open to listening. And I know that was one of the criteria actually we had about being open minded. Um, I, of course, I was disappointed in how he voted on the main hospital motion. But gotta give him a lot of credit, uh, for how he voted on that second motion. And that to me said a lot about Gary. And, uh, that is a solid B that I've given him. And, um, I think he's going to be a, a good presence and continue to be a good presence on council. And he adds, adds a lot to around that council table.
Solid B, but as the comments would say, lots of room for improvement there from Pat.
Well, I don't know what, you know, what.
Not, not, not in a negative context.
He sits, he sits on a lot of committees. He's doing a lot of good work. Uh, you know, there are some, you know, I don't know how much time we have. I think that he, I haven't seen, um, like we're, we're going to get to Jim and I think I'm going to score Jim lower and I'll talk about why. But Jim is at every function. He comes out to all sorts of, you know, back when there were more out, go out to certain things. Um, Gary, I made some promises during that campaign about, you know, and he did, I think retire and there was a coincidentally. This is not a knock against Gary. I don't blame anyone who decides, um, that they're going to run and say, I'm going to give my full time attention to this. And then decides, hey, but I'm only, it's only a part time job. And I think that's very, very fair. But there were some things that were said, um, that, that I think he's taken a more realistic approach. Frankly, I like the more realistic approach. So this is not a knock on his grade. Um, I like who, you know, who he's, um, I, I shouldn't say he become is probably who we have seen him, uh, as being. And, um, I, I like what I'm seeing. And so, uh, I, I just want to be clear, B is a really good mark. You got like, it's a good mark. Oh, yeah. Take my classes. You're happy with the B.
Look, I, I took one of Pat's classes and somehow.
With the damn B.
Somehow she gave me a G. I didn't even know there was anything less than F.
It was like swipe down.
A G is get the fuck out of my class, Tom.
I got kicked off the app and Pat's class.
Doug, what's your take?
Uh, so, uh, surprisingly, I gave a slightly lower grade to councillor Cashack. I was surprised to hear the grades from you folks. I gave him a C plus. And my rationale, uh, beyond everything else, a C means that you're about average. A C is average, adequate, reasonable performance. And I tried, and if you look back at all the grades I've given and think about which side of the line someone sits on, that C is the middle of the road. Considering that, uh, Mr. Cashack is a rookie councillor. Um, and you know, I think he's performing a bit above average. I think he's had to make some adjustments. He's had some learning, uh, to do as a councillor. Certainly early on, I think he struggled with some stuff, uh, in terms of procedure in the room. He's, he's definitely, uh, learned and has become more effective. So I think he, you know, I think one of the things that is a challenge for Mr. Cashack is that we have a pretty exceptional crop of new councillors, uh, in 2018. The, the, um, the level of talent and ability on council has gone way up. Any other term, uh, you know, Mr. Cashack probably would be an outstanding rookie. It's just that he has a lot of really strong competition. He's had a couple of good initiatives. The one, you know, that I think is really good and shows a little bit of political courage was, uh, uh, supporting, um, lowering speed limits around the city. In Windsor, that is definitely a challenging position to take, but he took it. He's also had some less good initiatives like, uh, backyard fire permits. I think in terms of his media and social media engagement, he's a little bit of a cipher. Uh, he, uh, he, you know, in campaign, he wasn't too active in terms of, of putting his face, name and voice out there. And I think he's been consistent with that in office. I think it's something that he needs to work on. But, but the thing that makes him, uh, an above average rookie, and I think above average councillor overall is that so far he has lived up to the promise of being his own man and voting on the issue rather than for political reasons. So for that reason, I think Gary Cashack is a, a really good performer as a rookie councillor.
Well, let's keep you on Doug and go into last week's guest, Ward nine's Kieran McKenzie. He's not here, so you don't have to worry about him calling you out live. What's your thoughts on the councillor?
Okay. Councillor McKenzie serves on 12 committees. Just for the record, I gave councillor McKenzie a B. He is one of those talented new councillors that I just mentioned a moment ago. Kieran has guts and he has a vision for his community. Right there, uh, in my opinion, as an elected official, that puts you, um, you know, that puts you into the, the higher tier. He's obviously a very intelligent man. He thinks everything through in detail. I think sometimes that works against him a little bit because he explores every nook and cranny of a notion instead of sometimes cutting to the point in the most effective way. I think councillor McKenzie is good on social media. He's not media shy. Um, he's always ready to stand in front of his choices, whether they're popular or unpopular. He's not afraid to tangle with the mayor, but he's also ready to praise and support initiatives when that makes sense. I think councillor McKenzie is a star on council. But when you stack rank people, and that's what this exercise really is, you end up having to think about where they fall short as well as where they excel. So I think that if, you know, all of the things that I have mentioned already about needing improvement, I think all of those things are true. Uh, councillor McKenzie could be an even more effective councillor if he took a look at those. But, um, the, the big one for me is that I think, uh, councillor McKenzie needs to temper the ideological purity a little bit. Um, I, you know, I think that's an area where, uh, it's really important in, in a position like city councillor to be flexible, to be able to, um, think all the way around an issue and recognize that maybe some of the preconceived thoughts that you come in the room with are not always the way to go. Um, and, and that to me would be what puts councillor McKenzie into the A range the next time we do this. If he demonstrates that, um, he can put the ideology aside and maybe some personal loyalties aside and, and, uh, you know, bring a bit more of a balanced perspective.
Don, are you swiping left on the lefty or right on the lefty?
No, I'm going to swipe right on Karen. Uh, contrary to what Pat said about councillor Geniak. I consider Kieran McKenzie the second woman on city council. So I think he's doing a fabulous job. And, uh, come on, that was funny, man. It's Karen. We're picking on Karen.
It's just the zoom delay, Don.
Sorry. That's what it is. Okay. Sorry.
You know, you're, you know, you're killing it when you're asking for pity chuckles.
I know. It's like, yeah, it's like, if you got to explain a joke, isn't that funny? Uh, I think a lot what, what Doug said is right. Karen, Karen is probably the most politician on city council. Uh, and he's been a politician for a long time, even though he wasn't really a politician. He knows how to play this game. Uh, I think he's very ideological and like Chris, uh, Kieran and I are probably polar opposites on a lot of stuff. But I think that's more of a public thing. I think behind the scenes, only know because I've talked to him about some of this stuff. Uh, I do, I do think he's a little bit more pro development and pro things than you wouldn't think he would be. Uh, I think he's really advocating well for his ward. I think he's doing a good job. He gets out there. Uh, he's not afraid to, you know, take on a challenge, take on the mayor like Doug said. I think he's doing a good job in general. Uh, I like the guy. I support him. I think he's doing great.
My God, the developer lobby is trying to buy councillor McKenzie.
Uh, he's, he's a cheap date. 20 bucks and he's good to go.
Pat, what are your thoughts about the councillor?
Right. Um, and I sort of gave a brief, um, sort of snippet on this when I was talking about Fabio. Uh, I also scored, um, Kieran at a B plus and, and, um, a very good mark for those that are going to say, why a B, you know, again, a new councillor, I don't know that you can have a superstar, somebody who's been on EU and actually get to the A range. Like that would be really hard. I think you're judging, uh, them on a body of work. So B plus is like the highest I think that you can really get realistically speaking. Um, based on where we are in the amount of time that we've had to judge, uh, performance, despite them being under like really unique circumstances. I agree with a lot of, uh, what, um, Doug said. I, uh, don't even understand what, uh, Don said. So I just wanted to be clear. I was on mute. So you might not have heard my, my, uh, my actual comment. But, uh, Kieran has, uh, definitely, um, you know, again, I, I, I know people are going to say, well, I do refer to that hospital vote. Um, boy, that said a lot about Karen McKenzie on that hospital vote. And more particularly why he was able to, um, dissect that issue to actually, uh, he had the skill of a surgeon, if you will, to take a look at that issue and bring to that discussion. Um, you know, some people were nowhere near that level of what he was looking at and why. Uh, and specifically by looking at his ward, uh, let alone anything else. So he's done a lot of really good work. He's also faced a lot of challenges. Um, he sits on committees, uh, that have, have, that have faced challenge. He did that, um, with, uh, grace. He did that. Uh, he, he, he spoke well. He gave you confidence that, uh, despite there being issues that the right steps were being taken and that you felt confident they would be resolved. Um, I, again, judging from would I, uh, cringe or would I be okay with this face and this person representing me or the city of Windsor? Uh, I would not. I think, uh, Kieran's done a good job and it's a B plus for me. John, we can't hear you.
I had him at an A minus myself, but it was in that range between a B plus to A minus. Just which one is it? Uh, and it's tough to figure out, right? Because they're, they're distinct, but at the same time, they're not. And, you know, kudos to, uh, you for having to deal with this stuff with like so many students. That's crazy.
It's actually easier to mark students. We have way more criteria and they actually have to submit things, you know, and they get marked. Like this is very different, but anyway, I was joking about being the pro.
So I thought that councillor McKenzie did a great job serving as ERCA chair during a pandemic and dealing with unprecedented issues. This fraud issue was nuts. That, that's like just having to deal with that at any time would be a huge news story. I mean, it's arguable that it wasn't as big a news story as it would have been outside of pandemic, but dealt with it with grace, as you said, gravitas, got to agree. He's also been dealing with the Ford government's massive changes to the conservation authorities overall, the fear of it coming. So just dealing with those unprecedented changes as well, gave him strong marks. And again, of course, against outsourcing caretaking. I don't think that's a surprise that it came. We all could have seen that vote coming a mile away. Um, and then, you know, again, with the mega hospital and the push for the independent study gives him a solid marks on that. So the A minus, um, going on to Ward 10 here with, uh, councillor Jim Morrison. I'll be the one to say it. Unfortunately, he did not light my fire. Oh God, that was worse than Don's. Nothing. I thought I'd get a little bit of something. Um, I gave him a C minus. He pushed for delegates to, uh, be back involved in council meetings virtually. Uh, moving from the written question answer to the actual virtual format. So kudos on that. But again, the vote to outsource caretaking rubbed me the wrong way. The vote against the motion to conduct the independent study, I mean, he, he's a former banker, right? And, and it's just like that right there. It again raised a red flag. Why, why would someone who's so, uh, financially minded in their entire profession be against trying to figure out the dollars and cents of something that really just rose, raised a red flag and that alone was enough to give the vote that I did. Pat, let's start with you going, uh.
Yeah, this was a tough one for me because I thought that, um, I honestly was really pleasantly surprised with Jim when he first, um, was elected. And, uh, so I, I've gone through a little bit of an emotional roller coaster ride with Jim and, and what I thought. But I have to agree with you, John. Huge, massive, beyond, um, words disappointment on that second hospital motion. I could not believe it, even the first frankly. I mean, he had an opportunity on that first motion to make an impact, um, that, uh, would have been unbelievable in this community by, and, and I really think that who he represents in Ward 10 actually deserved, uh, the vote, um, against, um, the hospital at that location. Frankly, when you take a look at it, I think, I thought he took the easy way out and I was really disappointed by that easy way out for Jim because he really showed a lot more potential. He may again, he may again, but I'm not, I'm not going to mince words. I spoke at that city council, um, um, meeting. And that was the single most important issue that he will ever make for this community, frankly. So go ahead and make an, you know, like really, that's how I'm going to judge everybody because I do believe that it is. And so while you can show a little bit of guts here and you can go against the grain there, you can be cool there. You know what? When it mattered the most, you didn't. And Jim, um, uh, you, why am I not being as hard on Gary or whatever? At least Gary, the second opportunity he had to go for the study, he did. Where were you, Jim? So yeah, sorry. Um, you know, I struggled between a B minus and a C plus. You know, go ahead, you know, and, and I, I went back and forth on the B minus or C plus. It's in that range. I, I like Jim. Um, I, I like Jim. I, I like, I'm surprised at how much I liked Jim after he was elected, to be honest with you. Cause I gotta be honest, like, you know, you're kind of, what do you judge people on, right? I'm like, ah, there we go. Another, with all due respect, older white guy, you know, retired. You're retiree who can do it. And, and he's been a very good, uh, supporter of things around the city. He does go to a lot of things. He does it on a lot of, so I value, uh, the contributions that he's making. So, uh, I, I don't want to discount that in any way, and I want to see him to continue to do really good work. Do I think he was a disappointment on an issue that would have been the most significant issue he could have made a difference on? And secondarily, to make sure that those economics, you know, I'll be honest, go ahead. Fred Francis, I'm already, I already think that this is just a lie. Um, Jim, I thought I, as a former banker, as a, as a retired banker, I took him at his word that when he spoke about financial issues, he meant it. So when he voted against that, I got nothing now. I got nothing. So I, you know, I can't help but wince if I have to hear next time an issue comes before a city council and he's going to want an economic impact study or wants to question the dollars and cents on that. So that's something that he's going to have to, you know, think about. But yeah, he's somewhere in there. Depending on, you know, how in the holiday spirit I want to be.
See, this is where if we had a Rose City politics bingo card for doing like city council watching for like having to take drinks or something. It would be if he says anything regarding, as I used to be a banker, I need to dot, dot, dot. Uh, let's go on to Don, left or right? Jim Morrison?
Uh, I'm going to swipe right, swipe right on Jim, but if he sends me a note after that, I'm going to ignore it. Uh, so I.
These are more nuanced than letter grades, Don.
Yeah, this is, I kind of like it.
You've legit put more effort into it.
I think we should switch to this method.
To the whole Tinder methods. Uh, you know, Jim, I thought was going to be a lot more conservative than he was. I think a little bit, uh, going off what Pat said, I think I'd kind of pinned him down as a certain kind of person. And I've seen him kind of go, he would have voted differently than I would have on a few things. Uh, so I don't think he's as hard line of conservatives you think he is, or as, you know, his perception was at the time he was elected. Yeah, a lot what Pat said was right. I think he, you know, he's out there in the community. He goes to events. He goes to meetings. He's doing his job. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't want to get into the hospital debate on how that went. So, you know, you guys can downgrade him for that on, on that specific situation. But all in all, I think he's doing a good job. I think he's pretty open to looking at, uh, individual cases as individual things and not just voting the conservative hold the line on taxes. Because to be honest, you know, if I want to give my overall grade on that hold the line on fiscally conservative, there, our council is fiscally conservative when it serves their needs. And that's generally how I feel about the fiscally conservative tag. A lot of these people have. Uh, so I think, yeah, I think Jim's doing a pretty good job. I think it's, you know, if I had to give a letter grade, I think Pat's probably right. Somewhere around a B. So yeah, I don't have anything really bad to say about him.
I want to be clear. I did not downgrade Jim's mark because the hospital vote, I thought he could have been a champion on the hospital vote. The reason I downgraded is how he voted after the hospital vote, when he voted against the report. The reason I downgraded is how he voted after the hospital vote, when he voted against the report on the economic impact.
Yeah, sure, no.
So that, that's why I downgraded him.
Yeah, no, completely understand.
Doug, what's your take?
I gave councillor Morrison C plus. He serves on 13 committees. Let's just state that for the record. And, and I think this C plus is rooted in some of the same reasons and things that I've heard from Pat and from Dawn. C plus is pretty good for a rookie councillor and I think Jim Morrison has, has some pretty good tools and he has shown a lot of promise. Where I think that there is a need for improvement and where I think that he could do the kind of work that would qualify him to be a B or an A councillor is to articulate his vision and, and to be that independent, but fiscally conservative person on council. You know, I think there is a lot of room for someone who's on the more conservative side, but it brings a more humane and thoughtful approach. And I think that that is what councillor Morrison has tried to do. But I, and maybe it's because my expectations were too high, but my expectations or my hopes were the councillor Morrison would be able to articulate an alternative fiscally conservative vision to the one that's on offer now, which I think is not very good, the vision of the mayor and, and some of his other allies on council. And I was really hopeful that councillor Morrison would be given his background and, and given, I think, some of the natural tools that he has, that he would come to the table and, and maybe be able to elevate that debate a little bit. It hasn't happened yet. On the positive side, I think that councillor Morrison is hardworking. I think he's got a great connection to his constituents. He doesn't run and hide when he has a disagreement with his constituents. But again, I think he needs to do a bit more to articulate his views and he has to work on the vision thing.
Well, we have run through the councillors, which brings us to the big one for the night. You've all been waiting for it. Mayor Dillkins.
Can I just ask, are you, do you have time? I know that
Yeah, we're, we're fine. We're gonna get to this.
Because otherwise we can leave everybody hanging and do this next week. Okay.
Oh my God.
All right, good. All right.
We'll do this one. It's fine.
They just listened to an hour and a half to find out the mayor's scorepad and we're gonna leave one that's lit, hangar.
You think that's what everybody's waiting for? Okay, all right.
And that's it. Goodbye. Okay, so with Mayor Dillkins, I think you would all be surprised that I actually, I had him at a A minus. He was at a seven out of eight on my scale and I was upset by it. But let me give you the reasons why he did. Okay, his judgment.
The poems?
It was the poems. It was solely the poems. It was a handicap of plus four. No, you know, his judgment, I put him at, you know, point five, his communication at point five. He's very ideologically driven with his own agenda. Accessibility engagement, again, another point five. He's working towards his constituents only. And there, there's a negative that comes for doing that later on. But it's, you know, he's doing half the work. Policy knowledge is obviously, I give him a one for that. He's aware of situations. Open mindedness was a full zero. Effectiveness in debate, again, point five. He's really good at arguing his points. He's, he's not good at arguing in what necessarily would be a debate, but he's really effective at just getting his talking points out and pushing them. His backbone, one, work ethic. Again, I'm not going to fault him for that. I'll give him a one for that. So he was at a five, but what happened was he got trapped in Jordan. And for me, that was a negative one right off the bat. His ideological rigidity, not being willing to even see the other side is a hit that will consistently be there. He's not willing to engage. And then the biggest handicap that came out was his going out for dinner specifically against COVID protocols, which brought him down by another two points on my scale. So that in all brings him down to a two, which was a D for him. And I know I'm looking aside from some of the major issues this year with Mayor Dillkins, like policy wise, but I really wanted to personally focus on just that COVID issue because out of our entire elected leadership, he was the only one that did anything that flouted rules. Like he flouted the COVID protocols and goes out for dinner and you can't, you can't fault him as much for being trapped in Jordan, other than I guess just not reading the room as much as possible. And we've talked about that when it happened months and months ago. So he's at a D for me. I think that he's an effective mayor. I disagree with virtually everything he brings forward, but I think he's really effective at what he brings forward. So it's tough to not, it's tough to have to balance the, I disagree with him, but I still think that he's good at his job. Whereas I don't think that he's good at his job because I don't agree with what he's doing. Anyways, that's my take on it. Pat, I see that you're bemused by it and I need to hear your thoughts on how I'm wrong.
No, so, so what I, what, what comes to mind is that you scored on a basis of what you had as a rubric and then you didn't like the score and you could understand why, and then you realized and you penalized him for it. So like, you know, if you take a look at why, how this would happen, like in, in other grading in education, it sounds to me like you thought he performed some kind of misconduct. You, you, you know, you penalized him, you know, that Jordan not being here and some other things was like not misconduct in, in a broader sense, okay? But on the basis of the John Littkey sort of criteria of, yeah, not, not going to get by, you gotta get penalized for that.
He's got to be at a higher standard than everyone else. So that's, that's what it was for me. But what's, what about your grade?
So I, so again, these are hard because we know them or we deal with them or we work with them. And, you know, there are things that I've liked, that I've seen the mayor do and go to bat on. Actually more so that are not as public as, as other things and, and where he, he goes public. You know, he's annoying. You know, I, so again, just like I sort of kind of did a full disclosure on Reno Bordel and I kind of have to do a full disclosure, there might be a bias for the mayor. So I don't know if I'm trying to overcompensate, undercompensate. Not that we're friends or that he lives down the street. But I gotta tell you that as somebody who was newly elected to the BIA under what many who listen to the show and others who watch sort of what happens in the city would have known, there was, you know, sort of like a completely new board taking over the downtown Windsor Business Improvement Association. Well, we had opportunity, the executive board, I was on, on that to meet with the mayor and have a really great discussion about how we wanted to have a good relationship with him. Obviously, what's important for the downtown should be important for all the city and we want to work together and we're not there. We don't want to speak through the media. We don't want to attack him and, and nor have we, by the way, right? I think we've been, we, we, we had values that we wanted to see in place and what we felt needed changing. And our relationship with the city and particularly with the mayor was one of those things. So we, we went there with our cards on the table to say what we wanted. And we mentioned a few things that we also wanted and said would be good for the city. What's interesting is that as we now move forward this year, for example, the lights in the distribution of some funds to the BIAs were, was actually discussed at the time. But the one thing that he pulled from that meeting had to do with our advocacy position on the hospital. And if you remember, not 10 days later, he appeared out of nowhere with the people who were called for press conference, who had no idea where he was going to go with it and lambasted the BIA and talked about the solid majority. And I cannot forget the solid majority, my friends. I cannot forget the solid majority. So, so whether that's going to be penalizing or not, that's one thing. He shut down transit. I think that I'm going to score him on the basis that I think that he does not have, frankly. I've said this before, I thought that his chief of staff would have helped and I think it's helped his communication, his persona. I have felt, and I said this in previous shows, that he needs better political advisors. Because I don't think he's got really solid political sense himself. I think he missed his calling somewhere in broadcast journalism, frankly. I think when he does those mayor minutes and he's at his finest. And frankly, I think he can be very personable in a not necessarily authentic, but in a personable way for political purposes. I think he, you know, he's not completely embarrassing if you don't know what else is done. Like, I am not embarrassed that he is our mayor. So I'm using that as another, another factor. However, he shut down transit. He, you know, the, the issue of poodles and bulldogs came right out of his office and don't anyone tell me that it did not. The, today, in the last couple of days, the issue with the, the city not getting any funding from the province, I know we're not talking about that, but anybody who's, who's watching the news on that. What is that response from the mayor? So I don't think he's got good political advice and I think he doesn't quite know how to stick, handle or navigate his way, frankly, through the different levels of government. And that may be because he has political aspirations and those are necessarily tied to either choosing a partisan side or having chosen a partisan side, it would appear more, more accurately. And not really knowing at what point is he the mayor and who is he going to piss off and who should he piss off? And we're going to, you know, he's got a gorilla in the room to help fight for the hospital, but at the same time as chair or as part of the WTC, he's going to like allow the budget to be blown on nonsense to lobby himself. He's chair of the police board and has been chair of the, the police board where they've come, you know, where a lot of issues came to the fore. So when you take a look at the totality, I gave him a C minus. And I think that is a very fair shake on my part for having, giving him a C minus.
Oh wow. C minus is a very fair grade from you. And I think I would listen to Drew Dillkins and Warren Kinsella. That would be a good show of political just insight. I don't know if insight would be the word I would necessarily use for, but it would be a good show that was based on that. Dawn, are you swiping left or right on Mayor Dillkins?
Well, interesting with the mayor. I swiped right on him, then he instantly sent me a poem. So I immediately blocked him and reported him to the authorities at Tinder. I agree with a lot of things Pat said. I think, I don't think he has very good political instincts. I think he takes things personal and I think he goes after people for personal reasons. And I don't think that's what a mayor is supposed to do. He kind of said after this last election that he was going to be more open to working with council. And I think he's having a really hard time actually doing that because that's not his natural instinct to be one who brings everybody into the tent. The situation with the COVID situation, I originally thought he was doing okay on. And then that whole thing with the 43 year old whiskey dinner at Nico's where, you know, six hours earlier, he was advocating, everybody follow the rules and he breaks them. To me, that tells me a lot about what kind of person he is. And I don't know the man well. I only know him through, you know, media. I haven't ever spoke to the mayor and I'm sure he's not coming to my house for Christmas. So yeah, I don't, I think a lot of things Pat said is right. I know what we get with the mayor. I know where he stands on things. I think he's a bit of a fake fiscal conservative like councillor Francis. I think he's conservative when he doesn't want to vote for something. So he uses that as an excuse or a crutch to get out of things. I'd like to see him, you know, kind of listen a little bit more and talk a lot less. So yeah, I'm gonna swipe right, but like I said, I reported him to Tinder.
Blocked and reported. Doug, let's hear the final vote or the final grade rather for the mayor before we get to our accumulated totals.
Sure. And my grade is rate in line. I gave Mayor Dillkins a D plus. And again, if you, if you look at all of the rankings that I, or the grades that I assigned and you can kind of see the rationale, I did want to make sure that folks were slotted into the right spot if you stack ranked them. Having said that, I think some of the stuff that you said, John, is really important to highlight in terms of you're grading a different office here. Drew Dillkins was an effective councillor for Ward one. And I have no reason to think that with a term and a half more experience, he wouldn't be a very effective Ward one councillor. But he's on a bigger stage. He has a bigger staff. He has bigger responsibilities. He needs to be judged accordingly. Mayor Dillkins is obviously an intelligent man, but sometimes I'm not sure how wise he is. I find him capable in debate. I think he's knowledgeable. He knows the files. He has more than a few political tools and he deploys them effectively in his way. But I agree with, with Dawn. I think you made an excellent point. I think Mayor Dillkins needs to learn to leave his personal baggage at the door. When you take on a responsibility like being a mayor of a major Canadian city, you need to, you need to be able to put aside the personal and, and I don't, I don't see evidence that Mr. Dillkins has consistently been able to do that. And my primary criteria for criterion for a mayor, as for a councillor, is vision and the ability to communicate it. And on that, the mayor falls short. He, he identified a really important issue and I know this is something I go back to again and again and again. In his inaugural speech this term, he identified an issue that I think is critically important to this community and that is economic diversification. Said it was his, you know, his top priority. He invited us to judge him on that basis in that speech. And he's accomplished very little on that file. It seems that his ambitions on economic development have regressed from seeking to diversify the economy to trying to find ways to drive government investment in our community, which is not a ringing endorsement for how much you believe in your city. I think Mayor Dillkins is inflexible. I haven't seen a whole lot of evidence of growth in his approach. I think he is a better mayor than he was in his first term, but I think that's more because he has a better council to work with and he's challenged more effectively. And, and to the point that Pat raised, and I think it's a really good one. I'm also really disturbed by Mayor Dillkins partisan behavior. His inconsistent approach to government based on what color of the jersey they're wearing. That is not in the best interest of the city and it's, it's not the way that a mayor should be conducting himself. So for all of those reasons, I gave Drew Dillkins a D plus.
Damn, I'm feeling like I should go there too now. All right.
Well, the votes are in, or rather the, the grades are in. You can't change them. They've been submitted, Pat.
All right. That's okay. That's okay. I was more fair to him because I wasn't sure. Everybody was expecting me to the big, to be the big beanie. So maybe I, 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 I had to like feel guilty about that, but I, I think you raised some really good points, Doug. Let me just say that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta agree with you on that. And Doug, I'm gonna pass the mic to you now. You're the tabulator, data scientist in-house.
Okay, the average grades. Ward one councillor Fred Francis, D plus. Fabio Costanti, A minus. Reno Bordelain, A. Chris Holt, B plus. Ed Sleeman, D plus. Joanne Geniak, C minus. Gary Kashak, B minus. Kieran McKenzie, B plus. And Jim Morrison, C plus. And the average for the mayor is a D. That is your Rose City politics report card. And, and you know what? I think we landed in a pretty good place, folks.
I think altogether we did when I look at that. Well done, gentlemen.
I think that's a, it's a fair report. I don't think there's too much, you know, ideologically driven grades that were put there. We stuck to, you know, our, our rubric. We stuck to our, the values that we thought they should espouse. Doug stuck, or Dawn stuck rather, to whether or not they looked good or not. So, you know, all in all, I'm happy with that report card.
I'm, I'm very superficial. I've never said anything different to that.
You did straight up say Gary looked good.
Hey, he's a handsome man. You can't take that away from him. Yeah.
I really like the swipe left, swipe right though. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into that. I mean, not, you know.
Don't, don't tell. Yeah, don't tell your husband about that. Make sure he does this on the show.
If I've got, when I have some free time over the holidays here, maybe I'll put together councillor Tinder cards and we can have the audience let us know if they swipe left or swipe right.
Not, okay.
More free time to play cyberpunk. But with that, I think we are done.
Just to, just to end all this, I'll speak for the show. I want to wish everybody happy holidays, whatever holiday you espouse to. Stay safe. The coronavirus thing is exploding like crazy. And the one thing I have said on the show many times, and I'll say again, those numbers you see coming out every day, those are numbers. Those are people. People are dying. That's a bunch of people who aren't going to be at their families' get togethers for this Christmas or Hanukkah or whatever the case may be. So I would like to think that people should take this serious because they're, those are real, actual people who are being affected by this. So stay safe, do what you're supposed to do. And yeah, that's my commentary on that.
Thank you, Dawn. That's a really good reminder. It's tough for everybody, but let's all do our part. Let's stay home, zoom with your loved ones, you know. It's okay. We're getting used to it. You can still see them. You, let's, let's do what we need to do. Everybody stay safe and have a good break.
Doug, final thoughts?
I don't really think that I can, I can top that. So happy holidays, everybody. Enjoy your double sized episode of RCP.
And for the record, I would swipe right on all of you.
Especially Patreon subscribers.
Yeah. So from all of us to all of you, happy holidays. Thank you for spending this 2020 with us. It was a really weird year for us. We started out moving out of Reno's kitchen when the restaurant closed down. We found a new home, though temporarily at Meteor, and then we did the hard pivot to work from home, like so many of you all have been doing. It's been stressful. Have I liked the fact that my first year of Rose City politics? I haven't been able to spend it with any of the co-hosts. We haven't been able to share a drink. We couldn't do an after show over drinks. It's been, it's been, it's been really tough. But it's been really lovely being able to share this time with all of you here, co-hosts. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. You've been a great addition.
For sure.
Oh, thank you. And thank you so much to the audience. Thank you to our Patreon subscribers. Thank you to Leuna625, building better communities. And we're going to put out another episode. We're going to do one over the break. It'll be a Patreon only episode. It'll be a great one. We've got a bunch of topics over the past year that we haven't been able to get to primarily because Pat hasn't been available for any of them. And the topics were all focused on her. So I've got a document ready to go. It's going to be a great Patreon, Patreon show. So subscribe if you're not already. It's going to be lovely. Otherwise, we will be back in 2021 and we will kick this coronavirus in its ass. So stay safe. Vaccines are already here in Windsor, Essex. They're being shot into people's arms and brighter days are ahead. So from all of us to all of you, happiest of holidays, happy new year and see you next year.